Okay, go ahead.
All right, thanks Kevin. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the June 11th Cuyahoga County Planning Commission meeting. Before we begin, I have a brief statement regarding our virtual meeting that I'll read for the record, and then I'll hand it over to Madam Vice Chair, Councilman Sunny Simon. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Cuyahoga County Administration building is closed to the public at this time. As a result, this meeting is being conducted remotely in accordance with State of Ohio House Bill 197. Interested persons may access the meeting via the live stream by using the link that appeared on the agenda. Public comment for this meeting was to be submitted in writing by no later than 1:00 p.m. today, Thursday, June 11th, 2020, via email to the following address, planning@cuyahogacounty.us. We did not receive any public comments for this meeting. With that, Madam Vice Chair, I'll hand the meeting over to you.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. We're here today for the meeting of the Planning, Cuyahoga Planning Commission meeting, 2 o'clock, June 11th. I'm here in the stead of Chairman Dever, and wanted to begin the meeting today with a roll call, please.
Yes, hello, Mayor Boakes. Mayor Brennan.
Here.
Counselperson Brown.
Here.
Mayor Byrne.
Here.
Ms. Martha Fields. Mr. Dever. Mayor DeSico. Mayor Gemella.
Here.
Mayor Prosek. Mayor Sellers.
Here.
Counselperson Simon.
I'm here. Thank you so much. We have minutes from, we have a quorum, and have minutes from May 14th, our last planning meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move Brown.
Second.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Mayor Gemella here. It shows I was not at that meeting when in fact I was by telephone.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I double-checked it and did not see you. I will change that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to amend, we don't need to formally amend the minutes, correct? You'll make that notation, Annette?
Yes, I'll make that notation.
Okay, first by Brown, second by Mayor Sellers. All in favor to approve the minutes? Would that change? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes approved. I'm going to turn it over to Sean for old business and the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission. The, we do have an item for old business, it's Resolution 2005-14-C. It's a resolution approving various amendments to the bylaws of the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission. We are, staff is requesting, first of all, we do need to take a motion to remove this resolution from the table because it was tabled at your last meeting. So if we could have a meeting, a motion to remove it from the table. So moved.
Second by Simon. Okay.
I'm sorry, who was first?
Michael Brennan.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. I second, all in favor to remove from the table? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. So it's now removed from the table, and do we need a motion at this time to consider 2005-14-C?
You could, if you could, I'd like to just share with you, we did make one change since the last meeting. And that was pertaining to Section 7.10, which is the conduct of persons appearing before the Planning Commission. As it was originally presented, when a person appears before the Commission, there was not a time limit set. The person was allowed to speak for the time period at the discretion of the chairperson. It was a consensus of the members present at the last meeting to put a timeline in place, and that recommended timeline was for three minutes. But then also give the chairperson the discretion to extend that at their discretion. So we did make that change. That appears on page six of the bylaws, I think it's actually page 25 of your packet. But that was the only change that we made, and there weren't any other suggestions from the Planning Commission. So with that, we would recommend, we do find that all the requirements have been met for approval, and would recommend that the Planning Commission approve the amended bylaws with that additional change in Section 710.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any discussion or questions about the bylaws? Okay, so I think today, if there's no questions and we're comfortable with these, I would move for adoption of the Resolution 2005-14-C as amended.
So move Byrne. Support Gemella.
Does that a second, Mayor?
Mayor Gemella, second.
Got it. Okay, it's been first and second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, so we have, we have new bylaws that are modernized and consistent with the new government, and, you know, we'll be working with those going forward. Thank you for the work on that. So I don't have new business. Do you, Sean, and you can move into your report?
Yeah, there is no new business.
Okay.
So with respect to the report, there are two items that are listed under there. First of all, the wetland mitigation in Cuyahoga County, as well as then a, the proposed amendments to the biennial budget in response to economic impacts of COVID-19. Both of these, well, these items were topics at the last meeting, and both items are requests to be placed on this agenda for further discussion. If you, if you don't mind, I'd like to go through, just give a quick, we'll take each one separately, but I'll give a quick overview on the wetland mitigation, and then open it for discussion, and then do the same thing for the budget discussion. So with wetland mitigation, at our last meeting, an issue was raised regarding wetlands. Specifically, we were discussing a subdivision that was being proposed in Olmsted Township, where wetlands were being disturbed, but the mitigation was occurring outside of Cuyahoga County. And the question that was asked is, can we require, how do we require wetlands that are disturbed in Cuyahoga County to be mitigated in Cuyahoga County? And the reason for that is because when wetlands are disturbed, they can be mitigated within the watershed. And the watershed doesn't pay attention to jurisdictional boundaries such as the county boundary. In Cuyahoga County, we have three, three, what, for purposes of wetland mitigation, there are three, we call them Huck Eight Watersheds. And it's the Black Rocky on the west side, the Cuyahoga in the center, and then the Ashdabula Chagrin Watersheds on the eastern side. And you can see the outline of the counties, I guess it's a little light here on the screen, hopefully it's better for you. But you can see that boundary for the, for example, of the Black Rocky extends basically entire jurisdiction of Lorain County and most of Medina County. You can see that on the other two watersheds as well. So even though a water, a wetland is being disturbed in Olmsted Township, the mitigation can occur on the far western edges or southwestern edges of Lorain, Lorain County. And there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of concerns with that as well, as far as the impact within Cuyahoga County, as we're putting the wetland mitigation is occurring in the headwaters rather than downstream where it can have a benefit. We're also, there's also a perpetual loss of wetlands that occurs in our county. Just so we're on the same page, just a little bit of background on wetland mitigation, and first of all, I don't pretend to be an expert on the subject. The information I'm sharing with you was shared with me. If I don't have answers for your questions, I'm happy to stop, go get them, and bring them back to you. But I just want to make sure we all, we're all speaking from the same sheet of music with regards to this subject. So when a wetland is disturbed, it can be mitigated in the form of restoration or preservation. And there's really three types of mitigation. Fee in lieu of mitigation, which you pay to a sponsor, the Nature Conservancy is a good example of someone like that. You can purchase credits from a mitigation bank. This is actually the example that was used for the subdivision we talked about in Olmsted Township, where they purchased credit, developer purchased credits from the mitigation bank, the North Coast Regional Council of Park Districts in this case. And then the third option is it's the responsibility of the person that's disturbing the wetland, the pernity, to either go out and perform mitigation themselves, whether it's onsite or somewhere else, or they partner with an organization like West Creek Conservancy to perform the mitigation on their behalf. And in fact, a good example of this, when I was in Fairview Park, there was a, there was a wetland disturbed somewhere in the Rocky River watershed. And West Creek reached out to the city to place a protective covenant over a portion of Coal Creek that was on city property. And that was in response to mitigate the disturbance of the wetland that occurred elsewhere. So since our last meeting, I reached out to a couple of our partners, and certainly there's a lot of others that deal in wetland mitigation in the county. But I reached out to Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District as well as West Creek Conservancy, and Derek Schaefer and his group, and tried to understand what the issues are pertaining to why when wetlands are disturbed in Cuyahoga, getting why are they not being mitigated in the county? There's really two issues. One is the availability of land. Not that land doesn't exist, there just aren't large amounts of land available for wetland mitigation in the county because we are not built out, but largely built out. And also then, the primary driver is really the cost of land. So versus, cost of land in Cuyahoga County versus the far stretches of Medina or Lorain County, there's, where there's more land available, there's, there's more costs associated with it. So financially, there's some, there's some constraints in place that, that, that limit how much mitigation occurs in the county. So then we started talking about what are the two ways to, what are the ways to reverse this current course, and how do we get wetlands mitigated within the county? And there's really two options. One, we discussed briefly at the last meeting, which is a regulatory, and the other is more proactive. And by proactive, I mean, how about we go out and identify these sites, understand the barriers that are associated with them, and then let's find ways to get creative and take away those barriers and make these wetland mitigation opportunities available in our own county. First, I'll touch briefly upon the regulatory approach. From a county planning's perspective, there's, there's really only one tool in our toolbox for regulatory measures, and that's in the subdivision regulations. The issue with the subdivision regulations is they have a very limited applicability. And by that, I mean, our subdivision regulations only apply to the two townships that we serve, which is Chagrin Falls and Olmsted Township. So there's 57 other communities in the county where our subdivision regulations do not have any effect. The other limitation with that is subdivision regulations only apply when there are, when there is a subdivision taking place. There's a lot of development that occurs, a lot of mitigate, or a lot of impacts of wetlands that occur outside of a subdivision process. So we have a pretty limited scope or focus when it comes to be able to impact mitigation through, wetland mitigation through our subdivision regulations. There may be other places in the county ordinance that this could go. We'd have to sit down and talk with law department about that. But, and the people I talked to were not attorneys, but there were, there were some concerns raised about the legality of putting in place these additional restrictions. So that's an approach we could still consider, but for now, the consensus was, let's maybe focus more on the proactive approach. So what we've done is, as just part of our conversation, just to kind of get some thoughts moving around this subject, is, obviously, you know Dan Maney and our staff, we have a very robust GIS resource that's available to us. We started working with West Creek to kind of think about, if we're going to identify some potential properties in the county, just a real quick scrub, what does that, what does that look like? So we've been taking a look at what large sites are out there, larger than 20 acres. What's one of those, of those sites, do they have natural land cover, regardless if it's wooded or just lawn or bare soil, whatever it is? And then do they have a significant area with hydraulic soils, or hydrant soils, I should say? Ideally, it would be a publicly owned site, but we didn't put that into our search criteria. So we just looked, regardless of ownership, we were looking really generally for those three criteria. And we found there was just over 200 sites that are available. Now, there's a lot of limitations in that data. We have to go through and scrub those. I'll give it, as an example, we would pull a large site that's actually developed with some buildings on it, but because they have a lot of open land area, it showed, it still was grabbed into our search, so we need to scrub some of those out. So we're trying to go through and at least think through and take one of those, of those two issues, tackle each one individually. So let's start with the land. If there's land available, let's start to identify where those, where those land sites are. And then let's then focus in on, okay, so these are the sites, then what are the barriers to making these an option for wetland mitigation? So that's one of the next steps, but then also too, Soil and Water and West Creek are really only a couple of the players in the wetland mitigation area in our county. We really need to reach out to everybody that's in that, that's in this space and get them involved. The Sewer District's doing work on this, Metro Parks has been working on this in the past, Western Lake Conservancy does work in wetland mitigation. So trying to take this idea and keep it growing, trying to develop a process moving forward. But just in the, in the few weeks since our last meeting, this is kind of where the direction, based on that, that feedback, that comment, is where we're headed. But I certainly wanted to, want to share this with you, give any feedback you have for us as we move forward. And then as we hopefully continue this investigation and this approach, check in periodically, which is where we're at. So that's my report.
Thank you so much. That's amazing. All the work you've done. I appreciate it so much. It's worthwhile, and I think it's really important that we still have some balance in Cuyahoga County and don't give up on, on maintaining the balance between some wildlife and, and natural space and the development that pretty much we've maxed out. I think there's opportunity with the land bank and really to nurture what we have. So I appreciate it. Any comments from, from the Commission or questions? Okay.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yes.
You're welcome, Mayor Boakes and Ms. Fields to the meeting.
Okay, hi, hello, Mayor Fields. Thanks for joining us.
I've been here for a while. I was a couple of minutes late, but I was here for the minutes, the approval of the minutes, if that helps, Annette.
Yes, it does. It helps greatly. Thank you.
I was as well. I had connection issues and had to sign off and sign back on.
Wonderful. Thank you for letting me know.
So noted, ladies. Thank you. Okay. All right. Thanks for the work on this. I really appreciate it. Any, so if there's no questions, we can move on to the budget. Sean?
So yeah, the next topic, again, this was referenced, discussed at our last meeting and asked to be put back on this agenda. So just a quick background on this, refresh everybody's memory. We were, the Office of Budget Management put out a request for all executive and non-executive agencies to put forth a 15% reduction in each of the fiscal years, so the current budget of 2020 and 21, plus then a 10-day furlough for non-bargaining unit employees, and all of county planning staff are non-bargaining employees. So affects all of county planning staff. We had put forward a request, and I'll share, I've had a little bit more detail there so you can understand kind of the details and the impacts associated with what we had proposed on the next slide. But right now, this is just proposed. It's sitting with the Office of Budget Management. While we all continue to monitor the CARES Act and general fund revenues, hoping that there's some change in federal legislation, or new federal legislation proposed that allows us to supplement our revenues that have been lost, and then hopefully reduce or eliminate this reduction in whole or in part, and perhaps even cancel the furlough. But there's, there's a lot of ground that still has yet to be covered on this, but this is the initial proposal that we had put forward. And both of these represent, I think it's a 13.6% reduction for this current fiscal year, and 11.9% reduction for the next fiscal year. And how we did that, 93% of our budget is people. So to, in order to make cuts, we have to touch upon different programs that we have related to our personnel. One area that we had where there's the largest savings is we do have a number, three, and before I had shown two, and I apologize for the mistake at the last meeting, we actually have three full-time equivalents that are open and budgeted positions, and they've been open for a couple of budget cycles that we are proposing to just continue to hold, not get rid of those positions, just continue to hold them as vacant until, at least for the, potentially as long as these next two budgets, these next two budget years, unless we're able to eliminate that sooner. And you can see on here what those positions were. Even if we wanted to move forward with, with hiring those positions right now, we are working through, and this was kind of ongoing as I came on board, a classification and compensation study with the Personal Review Commission. Really, hiring can't occur until we get that complete. Now, we're getting close. We're working, I've been working directly with PRC on this. But even if we want to hire these positions right now, we wouldn't be able to do that. The other place we had proposed a reduction was suspending for the rest of this year our co-op program, our interns, of which we have two a semester, and they're here full-time, 40 hours a week for 16 weeks each. And proposing to reduce, suspending that for the remainder of this year, so we had them for the, I guess that's spring semester, not having them for the summer and the fall. But then next year, we still are retaining the 50% of that program, so we would still have one co-op per semester. Now, that being said, even if we weren't in this environment where we are asked to give budget reduction, I don't know that we would have been in a place to hire co-ops at this time. And the reason for that is, we're in a remote work environment. Our co-ops, when we bring them on board, there's a lot of hands-on training that needs to occur with them, especially working with, working with the planners on various projects, getting them up to speed. And that gets a little bit, be somewhat practically difficult doing that remotely, especially in such a condensed period of time that they're with us. And that may continue into fall, depending if our work environment doesn't change soon. Because we start, usually we start making decisions on fall semester interns right now. We do have some ability to offset this, the loss of some co-ops, and that's, we have a contract planner, Megan Chaney, who you've all met, she presents most of the township items. We could amend the scope of her contract, not to add value to her contract, but change the scope of her contract so that she can work on non-township projects. And that would allow us to backfill some of the time that's lost with not having co-ops here. Because she is, she's not using all of her time for township projects. There's just not that many of them coming in right now. So there's a little bit of capacity that we could, we could, we could assign to her by amending her scope. A couple of other areas where we have shown some changes was to suspend or reduce our performance-based pay. We're a little bit unique. We're one of a couple of agencies, non-agencies in the county that offer a merit-based or performance-based pay. Suspended that for FY 2020. Still retaining 20, 50% of that for next year. That doesn't, that doesn't affect operational capacity. Yes, are there morale and other issues that come with that, certainly. But when we're trying to balance layoffs and other things with retaining people by, through budget reductions, there are some trade-offs. And we are still showing the 2% co-op in the FY 21 budget. As I understand that, that was not asked of us to be reduced. And at the time we submitted this, nor have I heard anything that would indicate that it's going to change for next year yet either. And then I mentioned the 10-day furlough, and we also are holding some funds that we're partners with the Executive and the Department of Sustainability and the Ministry and the Health, the Urban Tree Canopy Grant Program. That's really kind of a set aside because it's a dedicated pot of money. We still have that in our budget. It's just on hold while the county evaluates all of their programs. We're hoping that we can get this program going. We're ready to go. But for now, we're just, we, it's, it's on hold for right now. So that's a little bit more detail as far as what I had shared with you before. Hopefully add a little bit of understanding of what was, what was submitted and proposed to the, to the Office of Budget Management. I'm happy answering any questions.
Any questions from the Committee?
Counselwoman Brown.
Thank you. Counselwoman Brown.
Chairwoman Brown, thank you. I am just curious if your workload has reduced, increased, or stayed the same since the, since the COVID-19?
The workload is staying the same. We had a number of projects that were under, that were ongoing, and then as some of those projects are closing out, we're backfilling them with new projects. Particularly here in the next 60 to 90 days, as our community planning grants out there. So we have a lot of master plans from last year that are kind of really starting to hit that home stretch. And as they, they're going to start to close out here very quick over this summer and fall. And we'll be able to just backfill all that work with new work that results out of the community planning grant. So we have stayed as busy as we were before COVID and hope to stay that way.
Okay, good. And as the administration begins to make adjustments with the furloughs, is that a conversation you've already had or one that you plan to have?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of it. I heard furloughs.
Well, the administration has, there's been some conversation around the CARES Fund and utilizing that for payroll. And so I'm just wondering if that conversation has begun with you, or is that something you expect to have in the future?
Yeah, it has not happened with us yet. It is something I do expect to happen in the future. As, as we start, as everybody learns more about the CARES Act and how we can utilize that network or that, those funds.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If I can just follow up with Councilwoman Brown's question about your workload not changing since this program consideration went into effect, how are you going to be able to keep up with the city master plans and keep up with all of the work and expectation, especially of our partners and cities to get this work done if you have to go through this process of, of furloughing?
So we will be able to keep up. There will, I do expect some things may take a little bit longer because a 10-day furlough is going, that's, that's an extra two weeks for everybody in the office that they're going to be, they're going to be out. So will there be some delays? I, yes, I expect there to be some delays, but I don't expect those to be significant delays. I think the ability to amend the contract scope for our contract planner is something that we can help backfill that. She's a senior-level planner, and so that's, that's, that's a significantly bigger, higher step than having, having co-ops. So there's a little bit more efficiencies there if we were able to utilize her services a little bit as well. But I don't expect our workload to be dramatically impacted as a result of these changes. But to say there won't be delays, I, I can't, I can't say that. There will be some delays, but I don't expect them to be significant.
Okay, I just want to state that I'm concerned about the morale of, of the employees and the actual necessity of cutting the small agency that, that serves communities primarily with, with, you know, man and woman power, and we're impacting that, and I don't know if that's necessary to do this. Would you have any consideration to, you know, just maybe shortening this furlough period?
Absolutely. I mean, I'm happy to talk with OBM. I'm happy to talk with, with county council. It just gets in front of them about changes to what we proposed.
Okay.
Whether it's the furlough period or, or our co-op program. Really, the furlough would probably make the most sense for us. Take care of our full-time employees and keep them moving along.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with that if we can, and maybe talk to OBM and county council staff about, about this issue because this is an important agency that I don't know if everybody realizes the service we provide to our communities in the county and would like to see this furlough cut down significantly. I think you, you know, people have really had to sacrifice enough already.
I appreciate the support, Councilman Simon.
Okay, we'll follow up with that. Anybody else have any questions, concerns, feedback? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So our next, I guess we can move to concluding this meeting because we have another meeting after this. Do we have any public comment?
We did not receive any public comment.
Okay, so I am going to make a motion to adjourn the Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a second?
Mayor Prosek would like to second. I joined the meeting about 10 after 2.
Hi, thank you. Welcome. Annette, make sure to get that in the minutes. All right, we have a first and a second, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And so Sean, do we now have a solid waste policy committee meeting that we need to open up?
We do. So I guess second verse same as the first, we just go through and call the meeting to order, and here's the agenda. I can leave this up for the conversation. Otherwise, I could take this down. We can see everybody. It's up to you. There's not any presentation or slides associated with the next meeting.
Is Director Bickett here to talk about this, or who's presenting on this?
Yes, I'm here as well as Jessica. So yeah, you can take that slide down, Sean. Thank you.
Perfect.
So I, I think I can ask for, should I ask for a call to order the solid waste districts of policy committee meeting now on June 11th?
Yeah.
So I'm going to call that to order.
Mayor Boakes.
Here.
Mayor Brennan.
Here.
Counselperson Brown.
Here.
Ms. Fields.
Here.
Mayor Byrne.
Here.
Mr. Dever. Mayor DeSico. Mayor Gemella. Mayor Gemella?
Here.
Mayor Prosec?
Here.
Mayor Sellers?
Here.
Councilperson Simon?
Here.
Mr. Mathias?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you so much, and we have minutes from February 13, 2020. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
So moved, Brown.
Thank you, Brown. Second by Simon. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Aye.
So we have one resolution before us with regard to the policy committee. Can I have that read for the record, please? Or do we?
Okay, that is.
We don't need a COVID statement read or anything, right?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, I I I read that at the beginning. I think we're good.
That's enough.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
200611-A Appointing Mr. Kerry Mathias to the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste Policy Committee as a member representing industrial, commercial, and institutional generators of solid waste within the district pursuant of Section 3734.54B of the Applied Resice Code.
Thank you. Discussion?
From? Yes, I can just want to say a couple of things. So Kerry is with us on the call today. As you, hopefully, I think this same group was on the policy committee or mostly everybody when he was appointed in February of 2017. But if anyone is new, Kerry is the Regional Waste Manager for ArcelorMittal USA. And he has served us since 2017. He has served us through the preparation of our most recent solid waste plan update. His term ended in February. He's agreed to continue on, so that's great. And therefore, I'm recommending he be reappointed for a second three-year term. He's got significant regulatory experience, knowledge of solid and hazardous waste, and he also works for one of the largest steel recyclers in the world, so I think he's aptly qualified to to help us.
Thank you. Any questions? I just want to say thank you so much, Kerry, for willing, being willing to serve us. Again, you're active and committed to these issues, and we really are fortunate to have you as part of our committee, so thank you so much.
I appreciate that. And I'm going to throw in a little aside. I stayed quiet in that earlier part. I also happen to be involved in wetlands mitigation issues for the company, so I have some expertise in that arena too. But that's, I know that isn't Diane's area, but when you were doing that little presentation, I'm like, oh, that's, I I have a few things I could say about that. That can be for another time. Feel free to reach out if anybody wants some comment.
Okay, I I will reach out to you and probably Sean. Okay, thank you. So without any questions or comments, we can, I'm going to move a passage of this resolution.
A second.
Thanks, Councilwoman Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, and we appreciate your your time given to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. So district updates. It's Diane Bickett.
Yes, well, nice to see everybody. Sorry, we can't be together in person, but it is what it is, so. I wanted to just have Jessica start with some planning updates, and I'll finish up with some updates of my own. So Jessica?
Hi. Okay, so I just stick to the script here. First, want to mention about our Ohio EPA Annual District Report. So at the end of May, we informed Ohio EPA that we need more time to complete our 2019 Annual District Report, which is a report that is due January 1st every year.
June 1st.
And this is, this was due to all the setbacks that we had due to the pandemic. And it made it hard to be able to collect a lot of the data that we needed from the businesses and some of the municipalities and do it in enough time before that June 1 deadline. So they don't, it's not a formal process that we have to go through with them, so they are pretty lenient, so we just asked, told them what we 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 asked for about a 30-day extension, so we expect to have it all completed and submitted by the end of June. But I have been entering some of the data that I do have, and I I've got most of it, but the so the preliminary results for the 2019 data shows the China national sword's effect on our recycling. The district's residential recycling rate overall was down 3% from 2018, while the amount of waste landfillled increased by 5%. So I think that's that's kind of what we were expecting to happen. The residential curbside recycling alone had a decline of nearly 15%. And the residential, commercial, and industrial recycling data is still being analyzed. And but we anticipate that the district will still be able to exceed Ohio EPA's waste diversion goals of the 25% for the residential commercial sector and the 66% for the industrial sector. So the other thing we have was the our our the district's annual report and residential recycling report, which is what we mail out to to everybody. Usually, we have it before this meeting, but we're a little behind. So the district is in the process of preparing that that report, and we'll should have it done, should have it completed and mailed out to everybody in a few weeks. If anyone is interested in knowing, you know, how their community did for 2019 with their recycling percentage or any of the data with that, feel free to reach out to me or Diane and be happy to get that for you. The last thing I wanted to update on was about the, you know, we were, we follow the communities when they go out to bid for their contracts, for their waste services. So just since the beginning of the year, so the start of 2020, we've had six communities go out, go out to bid for their solid waste services. And the pricing that we've seen so far hasn't increased any more than what we anticipated it would last fall. And so the current average for all-inclusive pricing is around $15 to $16 per household per month. And that's about what we what we had estimated it would be back when we met with the communities and had our last trash talk lunch. I think it was September. So that's that's all I have for my updates, and back to Diane.
Jessica? Just a minor correction that the ADR is due on June 1, not January 1.
Did I say January?
I think so. That's okay. We all knew what you meant.
We don't know what month it is anymore.
I know, that's true. One final thing about the contracting stuff, we, the district manages two bidding consortiums with about 10 municipal members. We have a solid waste consortium and a recycling consortium. We took those two out to bid on June 1. Bids are due on June 26, so we're managing that process for the communities that are self-haulers, meaning they collect their own waste and they just need a place to deliver the materials to, so we'll see what those bid results return at the end of the month. Only other announcement is that we, the district was able to hire its seventh staff member back in April 1. He started in the middle of the pandemic, but he's been in and out of the office. Matt Walters came to us from the Natural History Museum. He was a scheduling coordinator. And for for us, he's going to serve as our recycling programs coordinator. He'll be managing our household hazardous waste program and our special waste programs, and he's charged with kind of expanding the the types of recycling programs we can offer here through our special waste convenience center. So we're excited to have him on board. Now I can move on to the next item, which is just to kind of inform everybody what we're, how we're handling the COVID-19. Staff has been working mostly from home since the end of March. We did close our office to the public for a period of time. We just reopened for recycling drop-offs on in June 1. Throughout this time, we've continued to operate our household hazardous waste program. We've been accepting the city deliveries because those programs are still ongoing. Our education programming, however, had to be adjusted. April is typically our busy month with Earth Day events and things of that nature, especially we had a lot planned for the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. And so unfortunately, April was kind of slow, but we were able to pivot to online presentations and webinars that have been very successful. Karen Miller has, our education specialist, has started doing webinars in May. She's done 12 so far. She's reached 437 people, so we're very excited that, you know, people are still engaged and they're still interested in recycling and learning about composting in the middle of a pandemic, so. We've also done two no-contact compost bin sales, and we plan to do those monthly for now, so. Many of the cities have scheduled composting seminars. Karen will be reaching out to you to figure out if you want to do them in person or switch to an online presentation, so. We're managing very well, I think. All staff is coming back to the office July 6, I think, is the date we set, so we'll be ready to roll then, and hopefully, we won't be in another shutdown situation anymore this year, so. And then finally, I just wanted to update, provide a recycling up-to-date for the city of Cleveland. For the last few months, you've probably read that the city of Cleveland lost its contract for recycling. They had a prior contract that expired, and and when they went out to bid for a new contract, that they only got one bidder. Well, the first time it got, they got no bidders, and the second time they got only one bidder, and that was Rumpy out of Cincinnati, so the, you know, the cost to process their material, which was very dirty, and the cost to transport it to Cincinnati for processing was just too much for the city to bear. So they finally announced that that program is temporarily suspended, and they've hired a consultant to help them figure out how to best design a program that meets the city's needs and their budget, so. Probably looking at a delay until next year, until something new can be launched. The city council has been having hearings on this issue. I presented it one a couple of weeks ago. And I think we'll be working closely with the city and the consultant to to help them through this time. In the meantime, we've been directing Cleveland residents to two opportunities to recycle. One would be the aluminum cans for burned children drop-offs. Those are located at, I think, seven fire stations in the city. And also the paper-only drop-offs that are operated by River Valley Paper and Royal Oak Recycling, so. Those paper-only drop-offs include cardboard, and there's about 100 of them, I think, in the city, so. There's still opportunities for residents. It's not ideal, but at least it's something, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks, Diane. Any any discussion, questions? Hopefully, next time, I think we're due to come back in August, maybe, for this, right, Diane?
I believe that's our next meeting, sure.
Hopefully, we'll be in person. So with that being said, I I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this policy committee meeting.
Second by Brennan.
Thanks, Brennan, Mayor. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you.
All right, see you. Thank you.
Everybody.
All right, thanks, Sean. Okay.